Twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two. And this is a public hearing of the San Benito C I S D Board of Trustees. I call this meeting to order. It's five seventeen. Ms. Rosa, do we have any public comment? Thank you. We move on to item two point one, Discussion on Adopting the Budget for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Ms. Perez.
Good evening, Mr. Moreno. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Ms. Servion. This evening, I'm going to be going over the proposed budget. You should have two documents in front of you. One looks like this. This is the packet for our proposed budget. And then a copy of the public hearing presentation that we have for you this evening. So if we can get that online. All right, on the first slide, we're going to talk about the totals for our proposed budget by fund. Excuse me. Under Child Nutrition Program, Fund one zero one, we have nine million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Under Local Funds, which is one sixty-one, one sixty-two, one sixty-three, and one ninety-nine, we have a total of ninety-nine million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, six hundred and five dollars. And under Debt Services, which are funds five ninety-eight and five ninety-nine, just to make sure that you understand the difference between the two. Five ninety-eight is our L A D project, which is a debt. And five ninety-nine is our debt service account, which we pay our bonds out of. That total is eight million, two hundred and fifty thousand, and forty-two dollars. So we'll talk about the proposed budget itself. Under the revenues, we have each of the funds on a column. And the type of revenues, which are the local revenues, those are the monies that we make locally here. So that's our taxes, our gate receipts. State revenue is tierras on behalf and any indirect cost. Federal revenues are any monies that we get from the Federal Reserve itself. The federal revenues, the federal government, excuse me. Transfers in are revenues within itself. So it might be money that goes from local into one sixty-one, one sixty-two, and one sixty-three. So it's still within the budget. We're just transferring within. And then fund balance is obviously what we are getting out of fund balance to supplement the budget. So the total for all of our revenues is one hundred and seventeen million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Under the expenditures, we have a total also of one hundred and seventeen million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. In each of the functions, would you like me to go function by function? Or are we okay? How would you like to proceed, sir?
I'd say just go ahead and go down function by function, just so that we can make, for everybody to be clear on what they, you know, that the expenditures are going to actually total the revenues.
Okay, yes. So in the transfers out, again, this comes from out of one ninety-nine into one sixty-one, one sixty-two, and one sixty-three, as well as five ninety-eight. The amount for that is one million, six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars. Under our instruction, Function eleven, we have fifty-four million, two hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. That should be the biggest portion of our budget. We're at forty-six point twenty-two, which is very, very good. We should be no less than forty-five to fifty percent. Function twelve, that's the library services, we have one million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Curriculum and Instruction, Function thirteen, four hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine. Function twenty-one, Instructional Development, we have one million, nine hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars. Under Function twenty-three, School Administration, this is all of our principals. Anything that happens in our principal office or anything around there. The total is six million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Function thirty-one, Guidance and Counseling, three million, nineteen thousand, five hundred and one dollar. Function thirty-two, Social Work Services, we are at four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Function thirty-three, Health Services, we have twelve thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars. That's going to look low. This is all of Function thirty-three is being paid out of S R three, two eighty-two. So last year, we did put, we had a zero on that one. And then we had a couple of expenses that were not, it wasn't something that we could legitimately do with federal funds. So we need to make sure that we have a little bit of local funds and give us a little bit of flexibility. Under Function thirty-four, which is our Transportation Department, we have three million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. Child Nutrition is Function thirty-five, nine million, four hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Extracurricular, Function thirty-six, three million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars. Under forty-one, General Administration, we have four million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Under Function fifty-one, Maintenance and Operations, this is anything that has to do with maintaining our buildings. Just make the general upkeep of our entire district. That's twelve million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Security and Monitoring Services, Function fifty-two, two million, five hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Function fifty-three is Data Processing, four hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is also one of the other funds that we are supplanting into S R three. So that's going to look a lot smaller than normal. Function sixty-one, Community Services, ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-six dollars. That one looks a little smaller this year as well, but we also have about two or three grants that we're able to supplement that one with. Debt Service, Function seventy-one, we have nine million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand, thirty-two dollars. Function eighty-one is Facilities Acquisition. That's anything that we're going to be doing to our buildings, any kind of building and construction. And that one's one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand even. Payments to Juvenile Justice, seventy-five thousand, that's Function ninety-five. And Other Governmental Charges, we, for Function ninety-nine, we have two hundred thousand. The total for our expenditures, which equal our revenues, is one hundred and seventeen million, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, and eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Any questions so far? So let's go over some of the additional information. I am very visual. If it doesn't pop out and look at me, then I can't look at it. So the revenue sources, I wanted to make sure that we understood exactly where our revenue sources were just by visually looking at it. Seventy percent of that is coming from state revenue. So our state revenue is our T E A payments. The next big source is our local revenue, and that's definitely our taxpayers, as well as any kind of income that we make here at San Benito C I S D. And then the last part is the federal revenues. Federal revenues is not usually this large. However, because we have S R three, we also have an indirect cost. And that indirect cost is anywhere between three and five percent. And if we're spending upwards of fifteen million dollars, that can bring in a good chunk of change. So we are looking at about four to five million dollars on just indirect cost. And then the rest of them, we do have the transfers in, as well as our fund balance. Our next slide is our budget by object code. And this one I like showing just so that we can see where we are with our payroll. Payroll, we should normally have it between seventy, seventy-five, no more than eighty-five percent. And we are currently at seventy-two point six percent. And then lastly, the budget by function group. So I, and there's an explanation on the bottom as to what is included in each function group. Instructional should never be less than forty-five to fifty percent. Our main focus here is educating students, so that should always be the biggest part of our budget. We are at forty-seven point eighty-eight percent. So next, let's talk about the current to next year budget. I like showing this just so that we can see what it looks like from one year to another. How are we doing? How are we progressing? Are we appropriating correctly? So you will see that the biggest change is going to be under the federal revenue, the fifty-nine hundreds. That is the indirect cost from the S R three money. So if you look at it, it's about four million dollars. And that is a big difference from what we've had in the previous year. We also have an increase on our fund balance. But that's because we have a lot of projects that are rolling over from one year over to the next. When we have a lot of our E-rate projects. You know, you've heard about how the microchips are hard to come by now and the stalling and the delays on our shipping. That has been very, very true for so many of our E-rate projects. So a lot of what we budgeted for in this year, we have to roll it over into next year. So what we're doing is taking it out of the fund balance and getting it ready for next year so that when it does come in, we can pay for it. And the same goes for the construction that we have, board-approved already for like the Land Gym Project and the tennis courts. So some of those bigger items that we cannot stop from rolling into the next year, those are going to be in the fund balance.
I have a question. So the Federal Reserve is the one that has grown in our revenues, and then the state revenues have decreased substantially.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's a direct effect from the, from students, student loss. Our A D A is going to dictate exactly what we're going to get from our, from the state. Yes, ma'am. So on the expenditures, I'll go over some of the functions that are clear standouts. Under Instruction, we do have an amount that is coming out directly from S R three. So that will reduce that amount. Under Function thirteen, the instructional coaches are paid out of Function thirteen, and those are also paid out of S R three. Under thirty-six, that was a result of me going line item by line item to make sure that we are budgeting appropriately for each line item. Under Function fifty-three, that is out of S R three as well. All of the payroll for all of our technology staff is out of S R three. Community Services, that was a result of reducing so that we can make room for some of the federal funds that we have as well. And the debt service. So as I mentioned last week, that we have, or the week before, I'm sorry. G A S B eighty-seven is a new accounting practice that they're implementing. And so any copiers or any kind of lease activity has to be going into Function seventy-one. So copiers, our Pitney Bowes mail machine, all of those were originally in whatever campus or department that they normally would have been. We took them out of that function and put them into seventy-one. Eleven, Function eleven, did have a lot of copiers because they're at the campuses. So that will make up for some of that decrease. But so that function will be increased so that we can be in compliance. Last week, we did get that budget amendment to move over the monies that we had already spent. And we are ready for that part. So I just want to make sure that we are all understanding what that increase is. Because it looks like we have more debt, but that's not the case.
And you refer to that as G A S B?
G A S B eighty-seven, G A S B eighty-seven.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is it because that the, the copiers are on, they're on lease?
Correct.
So anything that's being leased to us is basically falling into Function seventy-one now? Wherever it was previously, it's now going to be in Function seventy-one?
Yes, ma'am. And so we have the copiers, all of the copiers, and our Pitney Bowes machine that we have here at the office. So that one was in Function forty-one. All the copiers were at whatever campus or department they were in. That one, I, I don't believe they implemented that one until just recently. So our auditors, Region One, they've all contacted us and said, hey, make sure you do this part right here. So we're ready. The end-of-course budget, this was back in the eighty-third legislative session. They, they told us that it was mandatory that we budget separately for the E O C budget, end-of-course budget. So this satisfies the requirement of that eighty-third legislative session, which was a long time ago. I have not been told that that's going away, so I'm just going to continue to do that until they say, okay, you can stop now. So we have a total of thirty-five thousand, sorry, not scheduled, appropriated for P I C twenty-four, the Programming and Intention Code twenty-four, which is for our end-of-course budget. And then lastly, I'll go over the required postings. So this is a template that they give us that we have to put up on the website when we advertise, which was done on June eleventh. And so all this does is breaks down what it was last year compared to what it is proposed for this year. The only difference that you'll see, like on the bottom, is that there are several Function forty-ones. They do want us to delineate anything that is for lobbying and anything for required advertisements. So like public hearing, when we advertise for a public hearing, that's one of our required advertisements. So we have to code that separately. So that is on our website. And then next, this is what will be posted, considering the budget is approved this evening. This evening, I'll post that also on the website. We do have to post that it was adopted, the day it was adopted, and then exactly how it was adopted. So the information that's on here mirrors exactly what was on the proposed budget.
Ms. Perez.
Yes, ma'am.
There was a question at one time about the lobbying, that we were paying additional funds for lobbyists. However, Taskbeat does our lobbying, so there was a question on that. Did you ever get a chance to look into that?
Yes, I sent that through board briefs. As a matter of fact, I didn't even budget it in this year.
Okay. So it was a cost that you all reduced?
It was.
If you can, you know, just mention what it was that you found.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
If you can mention what it was that you found when you looked into it. I know you sent it, but if you can mention it.
It was a lobbyist, Eskimia Emponic. And he gave me a list of some of the lobbying he did. I do not remember it off the top of my head. It was a rather lengthy list. But I can forward it to you as well, if you want me to. I don't remember the exact information that was on it. I just know that it was lobbying. There were several House bills that I know that he was working on throughout the last legislative session, which was last year. So would, how would you like that information, ma'am?
Oh, you can just forward it.
Okay. And then lastly, are the advertisements that were in the newspaper. The one on the left was the Valley Morning Star, and the one on the right was in the San Benito News. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. So when working out this budget, when it comes to revenues, just to get a little bit of the process, we kind of basically lowball how much money we're going to be getting in, right? And when it comes to expenses, we try to keep it as close to what we will be spending coming up.
Correct.
So if you paid a lot, no, you paid a lot, you mentioned a lot of the fact that we're supplement, not supplementing, but paying, supplanting some things from S R. So S R is going to be good for two more years?
It should be good until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. There is talk that there will be a one-year extension for the carryover amounts. So we're looking at two to three years at the most.
So how do we best prepare ourselves for that S R money going away?
So what we did, Ms. Servion and I did, was we looked at some of the expenses that do need to be curtailed and see, okay, where do we need to very literally trim the fat? Because we were sitting in a very healthy budget, and we were able to spend. But as student counts go down, there comes a point where we do need to realistically look at where we are and where we're going to be within the next couple of years. And so we've already looked at where we can reduce some of that spending. We're looking at strategic allocations of our federal funds and our staffing. We're looking at what our student-to-teacher ratios look like, to see if there's anything that we need to do on that end. There's several different factors that go into it. It's a huge team effort with Dr. Cruz, Ms. Gonzalez, and Ms. Servion. We honestly talk about it every single meeting we have. So it really is in the forefront of our thoughts, like in every meeting. So just making sure that we're not frivolously spending is the first part. And the second part for us is making sure that we're being intentional with what we're doing with the money.
So as board members, how, how can we help you to make sure that when this S R money goes away, we are going to be still able to do the things that we've been able to do?
That's a very good question.
It doesn't need an answer. It doesn't need an answer.
The money maker for real is our students. That's it. Well, the more students we get, the more we advocate for San Benito C I S D, the more we, we give off that positive vibe, the better it's going to be. Because we want people to be attracted to come over here so that we can, you know, make sure we increase our enrollment, but also afford to give these children quality education that they need.
Keeping our fingers crossed that Virtual Academy gets approved as well by T E A, and that'll help quite a bit as well. That's money coming in.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Perez, I got, I got a question, Ms. Perez.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you can hear me clearly. I'm going to try to make this short and sweet. I don't know if there's an echo or not, but as far as the state, as far as the state funding is, is decreased because of lack of attendance, or a decrease in attendance or A D A, and we keep on pulling from our fund balance. Can you please reiterate the importance of the fund balance and, and how long it would take us to replenish that money that we take out of the fund balance, please?
So I've been here five years, and in the five years, I think we went from approximately nine million, and I could be wrong about that number, to about forty-five million. So it took a lot of very strategic balancing as far as what we need and what we have. We were lucky enough to get S R three money because that helped put that back into our pockets. Not mine, but you know, the banks. And it is, it does play a big factor in how we sustain over the next few years. So as long as we're using it strategically, intentionally, for one-time purchases, it should be great. The S R three will help out so much. But again, that is meant to curtail that, that curve, that student gap and in where they used to be and where we're going to, because we know that this is going to be continuing. So as long as we're strategic, we should be okay. If it's not, we can look at a couple of years of, of it looking really hard. After those three years are over, it could be difficult. But I'm confident that we can work together to make sure that that is not where we're going to be.
Right. I think one of my main concerns was, you know, the sustainability and forecasting, you know, further down the line. You know, if we're going to want to continue to, to try to increase enrollment. But yet, we're not allocating those monies the way we're supposed to, or, you know, marketing or increasing our A D A, because eventually this S R cushion is going to go away. So I, I think we need to be very clear with, with our San Benito C I S D family and, and, and parents in our community as far as this cushion is concerned. Because once that cushion is, is removed, then, then, you know, my concern is sustainability, continue moving forward. And we all know that it's, I mean, just by the numbers that you're showing us right now, it's going to be very difficult to sustain that, that, that moving forward if we don't, if we don't do something urgently to increase our enrollment or A D A.
Ms. Perez, may I field this question, please?
Yes, ma'am.
So we have been looking at strategic spending and strategic allocations. I know that just recently, I sat down with Special Education, and we did look at those numbers. We went through, and I looked at data, how many ARDs, how many initial assessments, how many reads or reevaluations after three years. We looked at those numbers, and then we looked at our assessment personnel, which we had increased by, let me make sure I'm right. We had increased by five. So, no, six. So now we went back, looking at those numbers, looking at our A D A, looking at our decrease in enrollment, and looking at our current special enrollment and their needs. And we were able to ensure that we reduce that six by two, down to three. So we will have three additional assessment people instead of hiring the full six and still be able to service our kids at the level they need to be serviced. Also with federal funds, we went back and we looked at our current federal funds. I sat down with Ms. Perez and Mr. Perez. And, and we looked at that. And we're looking at our carryover for next year, so we were able to reallocate eight hundred thousand dollars for staff. And also, we're still cleaning and scrubbing kind of like our personnel, our openings, making sure, again, strategic placement. We want to make sure we have the right amount of teachers at the forefront, helping our kids, but also looking at all our areas across the board. So today, we were also able to cut down two other areas, or two other positions. Again, this is still ongoing. Right now, we're presenting you a budget with being fully staffed, right? Fully staffed, and we're still taking the ninety-two hundred students in, in mind, you know, at this point, which is our current enrollment. Remember, our projection for next year was, what, eighty-seven? Eighty-seven? So right now, we're presenting a budget that's fully staffed at ninety-two, which means it's not going to be at that level. So we're going to continue to curate, you know, our staff, so it's appropriate for our students, but also keeping in mind that it's going to continue to evolve. Are we looking to make sure that our fund balance stays where it needs to be? Yes. Remember, we did reallocate twenty million into fund balance because of S R three. So as Ms. Perez indicated, that should help us a lot at this point. Will we have to continue to dip into fund balance? I don't foresee that. I do see that what we're doing right now, strategic allocations of our funds, looking at our staffing strategically, giving our kids the support that they need, and our staff the support that they need. Also, looking at our Virtual Academy and growing that, and being one of the only districts in the Rio Grande Valley, fingers crossed, to be able to open, you know, to offer that to the entire valley and to surrounding communities. I'm hopeful. And I think that that is really going to not only assist our kids here, but also the kids in surrounding communities. I do have graphs that I produced for the board members so they could refer to. I also looked at our Choice Academies and our magnets to see if it was actually a magnet or a Choice Academy. Were we drawing in kids into those magnet schools? And if we look at the data, we're not really drawing them in. As a matter of fact, some of the magnet schools reduce the number of students going to those campuses. And so that kind of data is very telling. So what do we have to do? You know, what do we need to do to make sure that our magnet schools are attracting students? Because we have awesome offerings, and maybe it goes, just go back to our marketing. Because we have robotics at the SEEM Academy, right? So are we ensuring that we have that robotics class, not only marketed, but is it at the level it needs to be? Do we need to do something more? Today, Ms. Perez and I talked about our return on investment. We've invested a lot in those three campuses. And are we getting our return on investment? Most importantly, our academic investment for the students. And that's where we're still looking deeply at what we need to do academically and matching the funding to that. So at this point, like Ms. Perez said, you know, we are taking from the fund balance, but this is looking at a fully staffed, at ninety-two hundred students, budget. And we'd like you to keep that in mind.
I, I want to thank you for, you clarified a lot of things in what you just stated for me. The first of all, the first thing that you clarified was that our revenues are projected on that lower number, and our expenditure- and our expenditures are being projected on the current enrollment that we have. And I think that's very important, because that's kind, that kind is where I was at, like, we're lowballing revenues and we're-
Current.
Which is current with the expenditures. Second thing that you mentioned on our, on our choice academies and this, maybe, I do think that the students at those campuses are really um, benefiting from being there. But to your point, we're not marketing them like they should be. Like, I've stepped foot on those campuses and I'm like, this campus is amazing, especially since I've like been to those campuses before, before they were the choice academies. We're just not, there's a lot that we can do, and I think this last year was very difficult because our main focus was just getting kids in classrooms and back to school. Um, but I want to applaud you for your hard work, Ms. Perez, for your hard work. This budget looks very balanced, and I look forward to any other questions that the board may have.
I want to thank, I want to thank Ms. Perez so much for the clarification and and of course, the consistency with the, with the budget, since you've been here for five years or six years. Uh, you know, I think one of the things too that we need to, we need to focus on is, is the fact that COVID played a huge role in uh, in in the decrease of enrollment of the ADA. We've been trying to recapture that. So whether you want to call it marketing or you want to call it, you know, it is what it is, you know, there was a, it was a huge loss to not just us, but it's very obvious, it's a systemic situation. So I think at the end of the day, you know, what are we going to do as a whole to make sure that these kids come back and recapture these kids? And and with all the, the money that's, that has been invested. But to sit here and say that, you know, we're not maximizing, or we haven't maximized, I think it's an understatement. I think we've, you know, we've maximized the fact is that the kids that are there have gotten a great education. Uh, they've, they've learned a lot, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a great asset to our school system. You know, I think we just need to go out there and reiterate to everyone that, you know, that the system is in place and see how we're going to do it to recapture these kids again, uh, or increase that. So, so, um, but that's, I do want to thank you all so much for, 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 you know, for figuring this out in a very difficult time. But it, it, it looks that we have our, you know, our challenges ahead of us, and it, it, it looks that you guys are working together to try to figure that out. So I want to thank you guys so much for the, for the explanation, the clarification. Thank you.
Okay, board members, any other questions from the board before I open it up to the public?
I do have a couple of comments.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, we're looking at this uh, information that Ms. Serviano gave us on this total student enrollment. In two thousand eighteen, uh, we had ten thousand five hundred twenty student enrollment. The next year, it dropped to two, ten thousand two hundred fifty, then the next year after that, nine thousand seven hundred twenty-eight. So it's been a steady drop um, in uh, student enrollment for a few years now, if we look back five years. And um, you know, and so one of the things that I have said in the past, uh, with previous administration is we need to cut, we need to cut on frivolous spending, like you said, Ms. Perez. And not just because we have money, we should be spending it. We should spend it strategically. We should allocate it to the right resources to make sure that our kids are learning to the best potential that they can and that we have um, qu- quality employees as well, you know. And over the years, we've had several things that have happened, including, you know, having to pay back eighty-eight thousand dollars to a company as a fee because we overused money for that food service company. Buying a tortilla machine that really has not been used. I think it's just collecting dust there, you know. And so in looking at what we're spending money on, it's important for you all to keep doing that, and I appreciate you, Ms. Serviano, coming in here, taking the bull by the horns and really looking at where we need to cut costs, because we don't want to end up in a bad situation where we're going to have to lay off employees, and we don't want to do that to any of our employees. So we want to make sure that our district is spending responsibly. Uh, Ariel Cruz asked, she said, what can we do as a board? We continue to hold you all accountable, right? And we spend only on what is necessary and not on frivolous spending as well. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay, if there are no more comments, I open up any comments from the public or any questions? Yes, Mr. uh, Aguillera? You want to come up to the mic, uh, Mr. Aguillera, please, if you don't mind?
Ms. Perez, are we four million dollars in the hole? No. Okay, then why are we going to cut the turfing at the baseball fields? Why did we cut off the whatever at the old stadium? You know, a couple of months ago, you said, you're not here to save San Benito any money. But are you here? When you found out what was going on, why didn't you let the board know? Because you knew what was going on. And blaming the other, whatever he was, is not going to help. You should have cried out. Things are going wrong. And if I know, these people should be able to find out. And if you were lying to me, that's on you, ma'am. You know, because we spend money like it's nothing, and it doesn't matter, just a couple of hundred dollars, you know. We also had another person buy a hundred meals, hundred meals. She was asked, who did you feed and how many people did you feed? This is a high administrator. Her answer to you guys was, I don't know. First thing in the military, man, they give you a sheet, sign-in roster, bang. And I know that's probably happens here too, I hope.
Mr. Aguillera?
Thank you. What?
I would like to say something to you.
Sure.
So we do have a list of also additional projects that we're looking at. But then again, we're being really cautious because of our expenditures. And so I would like the community to know that we do have a list of other um, projects, some of the ones that you did mention, that we are still looking at and seeing, um, you know, first, academics first. That's our core business, right?
True.
We do want turf.
Yes.
We do want lighting.
Yes.
Uh, but academics first, and so I just wanted to let the community know that we're still looking into those projects, just depending on um, our monetary restrictions.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Are we four million dollars in the hole?
Four million dollars in the hole, like you mean for this budget, for this year?
Are we four million dollars in the hole?
No.
No, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Perez.
Thank you, Ms. Perez, for your presentation. Anybody else in the, in the audience that wants to comment or ask any questions? Okay, once again, thank you for your presentation, Ms. Perez. At this time, we move on to item three point one, any uh, committee concerns?
I just want to point out that on the fund balance, if we look at what's based off of the comments from the public and what's being presented to us, we are three hundred percent more, moving money more from the fund balance. And Ms. Serviano, you answered the question, which is like, which was, is this something that we're going to have to be doing in the future? And you said no, that hopefully your administration, the finance office keeps everything the way it should be. We get our enrollment to the numbers that it needs to be, where we shouldn't have to be moving fund balance money. The public needs to know that these, and this is something that I learned. I had no idea how this worked until this last year that I've been sitting on this board. This money comes from different, different accounts. So when you move money from the fund balance, that's money that is that extra money that we have for the kids and things like that, which we need to keep low, the amount that we're moving to pay for our budget for this next school year, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. So these extra things that we want for our kids are exactly that. They're things that we want. That's why when I asked Ms. Perez, what can we do as a board to make sure that when this ESSER money is gone, that we have a healthy budget? She gave me the answer, and it's like Ms. Lopez said as well, like, we need to stop the frivolous spending and we need to take very careful consideration into things that we're going to spend money on. Would we love to do all that for the kids? Oh, yes. But we have to take care of instruction and we have to take care of our staff first.
Ariel, I think it's important to also understand where we came from just five years ago. I think Ms. Perez hit it in the nail. I mean, we're, we're in bad shape financially five years ago, going through, I don't know, it was six or seven superintendents. Uh, we went from nine million to forty-five million. So I applaud uh, the previous administration for, for trying to attract kids by doing what they're, what, you know, what was necessary at the time to figure things out. Um, you know, unfortunately, COVID came in and 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 uh, you know, hampered everything. And uh, you know, but, you know, uh, good for ESSER funds that we have, but we need to continue moving forward and and soften that blow. But it's very obvious that we have our, our uh, our challenges ahead, like I said. But it's, it's very obvious, you see the, the growth that where we started from to where we're at, and we need to continue moving forward positively, of course. Uh, like, you know, like Ms. uh, Ms. Perez said, to promote a positive forefront, to, to promote the parents to send our kids here to San Benito C I S D. Thank you.
All righty, anybody else?
Well, I did want to say something about the fund balance, and maybe Ms. Perez wants to jump in. Also, part of the fund balance are still projects that we have to complete, like our tennis court project, our parking lot project. So some of that money is tied up. We're bringing it forward into this year because it, they were not completed. Is there anything else you'd like to say about that, Ms. Perez?
Yes, so the money that was allocated this year for those projects, since we're closing off the fiscal year at the end of June thirtieth, that money will go directly into fund balance. All we're doing is moving it back out and back into the budget. So it's not like we're actually dipping into fund balance. We are continuing those projects. And the fund balance is the ultimate place that it lands at the end of the fiscal year.
What's the amount of the whole project?
The total amount is one point nine million. The amount that I have on the projects itself is approximately, oh, I can give you a list of that, exactly what's going into fund balance. It's a combination of the projects for Landrum, tennis courts, E-Rate, and then there's a little bit of Elon Musk money that was, that needs to be spent. So it's a combination of a, a bunch of little things that need to be spent before we move forward. I can get that for you, the, the exact amounts for that, if you'd like.
So that's also important to note.
Okay. I just uh, wanted to clarify something also. Um, uh, Mr. Aguillera asked if we were four million dollars in the hole. Our, our balance is, is very healthy. What happened when Ms. Serviano came in is there was a lot of money that was being wasted. And and this is my explanation, you know, Ms. Serviano can fill us in a little bit more. But there was a lot of money wasted in certain departments, and certain departments were overspending money. And so those, some of those departments had to uh, be readjusted as far as how much money they should be spending and not spending. Um, and so that was one of the things that I know. And and just to be transparent with the public, there was some money that um, that was used that shouldn't have been used uh, in the previous administration. And so that caused us to have to pay back some of that money also. Um, and so those were some of the issues that she faced when we came in. But as far as our, our, our district, our district is healthy. It's just that those things had to be taken care of when Ms. Serviano came in, uh, that were issues that were pending when she, when she first started, and she took care of that. Um, and of course, Ms. Serviano is holding uh, employees accountable also and making sure that they are being wise in spending our money.
Yes, sir.
That's what I needed to know. That's what the public needs to know, okay? Very good. You know, because you're right, there was a lot of wasted money. A lot of it, and big money, not small money, big money. You know, but we can't make excuses. That guy, hey, he's going to Socorro. Let them worry about it. And we're hoping that you come in here and clean some house, okay? Because well put. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. All righty. Anybody, anybody else? Okay, at this time, if there are no further committee concerns, it is six oh one. This meeting is adjourned.